Dear Father, this November we wish to recognize all of the blessings answered, prayers, and invaluable lessons. We praise you for the incredible things you have accomplished, and we express our gratitude. We ask you to be with those who are facing difficulties and in the need of assistance. We pray for guidance, protection, health, peace, success, and courage. As we gather together this evening, we seek your wisdom in making decisions that will benefit our community. We ask for your blessings upon everyone who lives and works in our beloved Taylor Mill. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the record show, we have a quorum. All commissioners are present. And we'll start off with the approval of the minutes of the October 8, 2025 Commission meeting. We have a motion to approve, Commissioner Murray, seconded by Mr. Braden. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Braden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cronborg?
Yes.
Now, we'll follow it up with the approval of the minutes of the caucus meeting on October 22nd, 2025 caucus meeting. Now, motion to approve, Commissioner Cronborg, seconded by Commissioner Merritt. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cronborg?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Braden?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Okay, so we have special guests here tonight. We have the Scott High School volleyball team along with their beloved coach. And we have a special presentation for the volleyball team as well as the coach. So I'll just, from the volleyball team perspective, I'll stand right here and just say this, ladies, that whereas the city of Taylor Mill acknowledges the achievements of the Scott High School volleyball team, and whereas Scott's volleyball team secured a spot in the state tournament bracket for the second consecutive years by triumphing over George Rogers Clark with a three-to-one victory in the 10th Region Championship. And whereas the Eagles claimed the 10th Region Championship and advanced to the state semifinals last season, competing against Lexington Catholic in one of the eight first-round final games, and whereas the team is expertly coached by Andrea Sullivan with Mylan Minor, serving as the team captain, who is also the Region 10 Player of the Year. And whereas Scott took a lead for CRC and rallied to tie the game at 24, and Senior Morgan, Justice, and Minor secured the final two points. And whereas Minor and Justice were honored as all tournament selections, along with seniors, teammates, Ryan and Peyton Grisby. And whereas the Eagles have maintained a remarkable regional winning streak, finishing regular season and postseason undefeated in their region. And whereas before the championship tournament, Mylan Minor was recognized again as the 10th Region Player of the Year by the Kentucky Volleyball Coaches' Association entering the tournament with a team leading 574 kills, 46 blocks, for a 29-and-11 Eagles record, who have now achieved 11 consecutive victories toward the end of the year. It's signed by me on this day to honor all you ladies for the tournament championship for the 10th Region. So, I don't know if you want to, how you want to do this, but I will. I hope you ladies would like to have your photo taken by your parents or what, but gather around all the way. I'm getting back up here. I want to be in the back. I want you guys in the front. All right. So where is Miss Minor?
Right here.
There you go. I want you to hold the...
Perfect.
Just a little bit so you can see the flag.
Just smile.
Mayor Bell, might we add that Miss Minor is the daughter of Shannon Minor, who was a standout basketball player NKU.
This is for Andrea. You can't get away now. So I have a couple of things to say about this lady. First of all, I know that spending 22 years teaching and being a volleyball coach is quite a thing that you should be proud of, and I hope you are proud of. And the accomplishments that you've had over the last 22 years are simply amazing, and that's why we wanted to make sure that you had a special plaque for your doobies. And I just wrote a couple of things down, just, you know, that your dedication to Scott High School is also very much appreciated. Taylor Mill is very proud to be a hold of Scott High School. We always want to try to support Scott High School in every way we can, and I think hopefully keep coming back, and we'll keep giving you some of these. I know you lose to a couple of good players, but you're good at building. That's obvious, right? So, having said that, Andrea, so the city of Taylor Mill seeks to recognize and honor Andrea Sullivan. Whereas Coach Andrea Sullivan serves as the head varsity volleyball coach and art teacher at Scott High School. And whereas she recently celebrated 500 career victories, that's quite a milestone, I might add, and that you were named the Kentucky Volleyball Coaches' Association 10th Region Coach of the Year. And we know that's two years in a row for that, right? That's amazing as well. Whereas under your leadership, the team has made 11 regional championship appearances as well as four consecutive regional titles. That's impressive, and we certainly recognize that. And whereas Scott volleyball team has qualified for the state tournament bracket for the second year in a row, defeating George Rogers Clark, and I love when you beat them. Okay, so I have a little familiarity with that in basketball, though. So whereas Coach Sullivan is not just an educator, but you're also a dedicated coach and a mentor, always ready to support your students and your players. And whereas we honor Coach Andrea Sullivan for the incredible impact that she has on the students of Scott High School. And whereas I, Daniel L. Bell, mayor of the city of Taylor Mill, extends a heartfelt congratulations to Coach Andrea Sullivan and her well-deserved Coach of the Year, signed by me on this day.
I'd like for the city commission to have any comments that you wish to make to the team. To Park or anybody?
Yeah, I would. Andrea and my son Scott went to school together. I always heard him talk about Popple. That was her maiden name, and they were really close friends. And I've known Andrea since she started high school, probably grade school. So I'm very, very proud of you. I know our whole family is, so congratulations.
I can just say, I know Scott pretty well. I drive a school bus for him. And proud of him, I mean, so proud of the volleyball team and proud of the school. So keep up the good work.
I just want to say, I'm proud of each and every one of you. I know how hard you've worked to get to this. So it's not just us saying congratulations. You worked really hard to get there. So we're so proud of you and your efforts.
Let me back up a step. I'm proud of all of you, too. You did a great job. We're so proud of you, and thank you for representing Taylor Mill and Scott High School so well.
I remember seeing you coach a little girl across the street like mine, Lauren O'Connor. And I watched her grow with you, and you did a great job coaching her and all these girls. You've done a good job. And you girls worked hard for it. Good job.
Yeah, little girl Lauren was my niece.
Yeah, little.
Well, Scott High School has a lot to be proud of, and the city of Taylor Mill is extremely happy that you guys are part of our city. And we want to always do whatever we can to support your activities. And when you do well, you need to be rewarded. The city of Taylor Mill is well, ready and willing to do that. So Andrea, bring some more back. We'll take, we'll take a couple more of these. And you know, the thing about it is, I was looking back at the records, in 1989, Scott took the boys to the state tournament. In 2012, they took the boys to the state tournament. So you guys are building a nice record, if you will, for this area and Taylor Mill specifically. So we appreciate all that. And we appreciate the athletic director, Casey, did a good job, and the principals and the teachers. Thank you very much.
And the parents.
And the parents. Oh, yeah, I can't forget the parents. That's probably, good point, Rose.
Keep bringing ones back. We'll be happy to keep giving them ones.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So I know you ladies will read. Thanks for getting everything together. Thank you very much, Andrea.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, ladies. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You know, it's amazing, all these, all these girls leave, and we see all those old faces sitting behind them.
Come back, come back.
Nice mark. Real nice.
Bye, Andrea. All right. Okay, so our next guest, we have a special guest, the new director of PDS, Josh Weiss. Josh, would like to address the commission?
Thank you, Mayor. Good night to be here. Proud product of Scott High School myself. Yeah. Mayor, commission members, I'm literally here just to say hi tonight, so you can put a face with the name. And I'll just, I'll take a couple of minutes. But as the mayor said, my name is Josh Weiss, and I am honored to serve as Executive Director of Planning and Development Services of Kent County. I think I'm in my third month now. But I appreciate to be here tonight and just to introduce or reintroduce myself to those of you I've already worked with for a while. Just a bit about my background. I joined PDS about four years ago to design and launch the Community Development Initiative, which works with all the cities and then the county itself on their local economic development priorities, and to make sure their communities are growing in the way they want them to grow. I did grow up mainly in Edgewood, where my parents still live, but have lived in Erlanger for the past several years. Parishioner at St. Pius, but as I mentioned, proud graduate of Scott High School, had some just phenomenal, phenomenal teachers there, still stay in touch with. And I think I started at Woodland. I think Woodland was about, I think it had been open for about two or three years when I started at Woodland. So that was the new school, well, Scott was still the new school at the time, although now it is totally a new school. So completely different than when I was there. And then I completed my undergraduate and graduate degrees at NKU and Thomas More. Most of my professional experience has been on the economic development side, both on the public and private sectors. Before PDS, I served as Economic Development Director and City Administrator for a larger city here in northern Kentucky. And then between those roles, I served as Vice President for the Regional Economic Development Initiative in Cincinnati, which is the private Jobs Ohio Network Partner for the region. As you know, we manage, at PDS, we work with Taylor Mill and all of the 19 other communities in Kent County in several areas, from planning and zoning, which is, you know, the most recognizable function that we do, but also infrastructure engineering on new subdivisions, building inspections, GIS mapping, community development, as I mentioned, and then with a handful of communities who have a contract with us for code enforcement, which you all do. And then we also support the Kent County Planning Commission, the Joint County Board of Adjustment, and the Joint County Code Enforcement Board. My view, kind of my mission of PDS, is that we are partners to each local government we serve. So I tell our team and our staff that, you know, work for a city, just as you're an extension of their staff, you're serving the same residents, the same taxpayers, and the same elected officials. And I think, again, for those of you who do know me, I'm pretty open and pretty collaborative, so I am always available for phone call, text, in-person meeting, whatever you need, literally a phone call away. But again, Mayor, just wanted to be here to say hi tonight and meet those of you who have not had the pleasure to do so. So happy to take any questions. Don't ask me anything too technical. I'm just the executive director. So, yeah. But anyways, glad to be here.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
So as you stated, Josh, we know where to find you.
I know you do, Mayor.
You can run with your camera.
I gave him my sign.
All right.
Thanks, Tom.
So now it's time for public comment. Any guests?
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we need to vote on the proclamations?
Well, okay, I got it in the, in the list of stuff after the public.
Okay. I didn't see it.
Mike Blackburn, please.
So Mike Blackburn, 707 Forest Lane. I've got a couple of things. Last month, we talked about, or you guys, the commission, had talked about the creek behind. The house is on Vincent Drive, how it's draining, and the retention pond. I don't know how many of you have ever walked that terrain back there. When I worked back there, I walked it all the way up to the retention pond, when it was dry and when it was pouring down rain, to see how the water was flowing. There's a retention pond, and then there's a second retention pond, which backs up to a dam. It's a little gravel road. The retention pond is doing its job, but that second one leaks out of the bottom. I saw that when I was up there. So I don't think changing the restrictor plate on the original, that first one, is going to make much difference because the water comes out of that second one. That gets water from different areas. The second thing is, down from that, all the yards come down to that creek back there. So there's a lot of runoff. It's like small creeks that come off of that hillside that go into that, that little creek behind the houses or the moors and the Miss Freeman. So it's, it's water from everywhere. It's just not that retention pond. So I wanted to make that clear, that sometimes on an overview map, you can't see that. But I wanted to try to save the city some money, and the engineering and that kind of stuff is, you have to go out there when it's pouring down rain to see how it's all flowing. Some of those are creeks that are this wide that come off that hill in the back, and they make a big difference when they're coming down. So the other thing is, you talked about the property at Pride Park, the next to Pride Park, where they're going to start developing houses and the fence there. I would just suggest that whoever's developing that pay for a fence that goes all the way back there. If you could work with them, they'd probably do it. They wouldn't have to worry about building one ourselves or maintaining it. I guess that's going to be their access road along the edge of the park. It just matched the one with the park, and I think they'll be able. The other thing is the party at the park. It's, I think it's a lot of money to spend for four or five hours, $40,000, no matter how you get it. We talk all the time, or the commission talks all the time about, we're paying for other people to come to the park fest from other cities and around whatever. Well, Derek Allen, you say he attracts a big following. Well, that following is going to be from all over northern Kentucky and Cincinnati anyway. You're paying for his party, his concert, to bring his people. And what's the percentage of Taylor Mill people, residents that are going to be there? It's something that I would consider. The other thing is, you talked about making up sales to some of the vendors, some of the food trucks, up to $750. I would give them 33% of the difference, because otherwise it's just full profit for them. They don't have to work for that difference. And some, some of those food trucks sell for a lot less than others. So some are going to hit it right away, but they're going to sell, they're going to make less anyway. And so I would, I would take, I'm looking at food costs, labor costs, and then profit. I would guess that 33% is a, is a healthy profit for a food truck. So I wouldn't give them the whole, make up the whole difference. Otherwise, what if they get rained out? Is there a plan to pay the food trucks for a rain out?
Oh, you're asking, we haven't got that. They haven't made, any decisions have been made.
So otherwise, it's $750. So I would say, like, 50%, if it's a rain out, give them 50% of the $750, just to be fair. So, so those are, and then there's, I've talked to other businesses who would be willing to sponsor this party in the park next year.
So we're taking care of that. You don't have to worry about that.
Have them call me. If they want, if they want sponsors, have them call the city.
So Mayor, you want me to tell these businesses, they're not welcoming?
Anybody that wants to support the event, write with us.
But do you want the sponsors or not? You said you're taking care of it.
We already got some. We're ready, you know, we'll let you know what they are. Says everything is confirmed.
Well, Mayor, I think if he's got some people willing to put up money towards it, it'll cut down on our costs. I'd be willing to hear who these sponsors are.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have them call the office. Have them call the office and ask for Brian, because he's here all the time.
And the other part of it was, if there's enough sponsorship, could we do it on Saturday and make it longer so people could make it to the event?
So letters will be going out to all of the businesses, even the ones that are not in Taylor Mill. So everything will be done in due, in due time.
Okay. So, okay, the, so it's, the other thing was to do it on a Saturday where more people could come. Okay. So, that's all ahead.
All right.
Thank you. Mike, don't forget to hand your business that might be interested to contact Brian.
Yeah.
Because now's the time for that.
Or if you've got the list, give it to them.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Mike Bussey?
Good evening. Mike Bussey, 715 Vincent Drive. I'm here for my yearly visit. I had heard through the grapevine that that project for Vincent Drive is ready to start. Is that true or not true?
True.
Is there any word when that might be? Last time I was here a year ago, it was 30% in the making.
It's 90% now.
It's 90%. Okay, well, that's close. That's good to know. I can pass that back, because I had heard through the grapevine that they were getting ready to start.
I talked to Maggie yesterday, yeah.
And it wasn't even her. It was somebody else. So, second one, I remember I texted you about that, those holes in the street. Any chance?
Jerry came down and looked at them.
I came down and looked. I bet he, giant holes on Mason Road. So we worked on Mason. We've been on Sandro. We've been on several roads. We're just making our way through.
Okay, because that was five months ago, and I didn't know if you had got word about it or not.
Yes, I, yes, I did.
Okay. That's all we got.
Thank you.
Have a good New Year.
I'll see you next month.
See you next year.
All right. So now we'll move on to the voting on the proclamation for the volleyball coach and team. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Cronborg, seconded by Commissioner Merritt. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cronborg?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Braden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes. Now, here's the proclamation for the team. Motion to approve by Commissioner Murray, seconded by Commissioner Braden. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Braden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cronborg?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Municipal Order 171, hiring a police officer, Jeffrey Hoppinjans, and firefighter Trent Hanson. Jack?
Hi, this is...
Go ahead. The officer's here. I'm sorry if you want to bring him up.
I'm like James, tell us about him and Brian, tell us about.
You find him?
Yep.
Is that man Jeff for a long time? Jeff was on our fire department years ago and did a great job. I'm really, really happy to see you back, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
So just real quick, it's my pleasure to introduce a lifelong northern Kentuckian, Officer Jeff Hoppinjans. He's got almost three decades of public service to northern Kentucky, under his belt between fire departments and police departments. Most recently served with the Kent County Sheriff's Office, where he retired after a long law enforcement career. We are happy to have Jeff here. He's going to bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to our organization, and we'll hit the ground running. It's just, quick note, that he is filling the spot that was approved in the July fiscal year for a new officer. So we are now at full staff with our new spot. So it's, I'm happy to be able to report that. But Jeff is, is here. He started this week, and he's already getting, I think his first day on the road is Sunday in training. So he'll spend the next several weeks at FTO. But we're, we're glad to have Jeff and look forward to watching his success.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll read. Oh, we got this.
Wait a minute, Jeff, you're not official yet.
Yeah.
Let the chief talk a little bit about Trent.
Can we talk about Trent?
Yes. Even though Trent couldn't be here tonight.
Right. Do we do that now or after they're done?
No.
Should we vote on him first?
It's all one.
It's all one, okay.
It's all one, yep.
All right. Well, good evening. Unfortunately, Trent Hanson couldn't be here this evening. Most of you probably know him. Trent's been around for a long time. He started back as a volunteer with Taylor Mill in the late 90s, I believe. He had a career and worked in Newport, Central Campbell for a while. He most recently retired from Hebron as Assistant Fire Chief. So he's got 20-plus years of paramedic and firefighting under his belt. And so he's a great addition to our, our staff. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening, but he could have been, he would be.
Trent, also someone we welcome back. Trent did a great job while he was here, so we're glad to have him back.
Yeah, he's very valuable. His family's still from Taylor Mill. I believe his mom lives down off Inser Bonnie. He's back in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to make a motion that we hire Jeff Hoppinjans and Trent Hanson, respectively.
Okay. You have a second. Mr. Merritt, roll call vote, please. I guess we got to read your, I guess we got to read the...
Yeah, so Municipal Order of the City of Taylor Mill in Kent County, Kentucky, appointing Officer Jeffrey Hoppinjans and the Police Department, and firefighter Trent Hanson in the Fire Department for the City of Taylor Mill. Both of these appointments are effective, I'm sorry, Jeffrey Hoppinjans appointment is effective November 10, 2025. Trent's is effective October 15, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cronborg?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Braden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes. Now, moving on to...
Welcome aboard.
Order 414, second reading.
So an ordinance to the city of Taylor Mill in Kent County, Kentucky, amending Chapter 75 of the Taylor Mill Code of Ordinances related to parking schedules. This is a bit of a housekeeping ordinance. You can see what is struck through is what is being deleted. What is underlined is what is being added. And there's changes going on to Bonnie Drive, Daybreak, Ezra Drive, Sunset Drive, South Sunset Drive, Bothways, Sunset Place, Taylor Creek, and that is it.
What about Knollwood?
And North Janet Drive and Mayford Drive, yes. And Knollwood.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the second reading. I have a motion to approve.
Dickens got it.
By Dan, seconded by Caroline. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Braden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cronborg?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. So we're moving on to new business now, and this is the city-county anniversary, county anniversary celebration discussion. Caroline?
First, I want to call everyone's attention to the sponsorship level form that you got. I hope you've all had a chance to look at it, to see if there's anything that you're uncomfortable with. We've rehashed this numerous times. I've met with Christie and Brian, and back and forth, and rewritten, and we were trying to come up with something that would work. So I hope you read it. Do you have any recommendations, any changes, anything you would like to see different?
I appreciate everything you've done with this.
Well, it's not just me, but I've got...
Well, I mean, the committee or whatever. So thank you for doing this.
We tried to make this something that would be attractive to people, but not so inhibiting that people wouldn't want to do it. So if it's okay, does anyone have any suggestions at this point? If not, I would like... If not, I would like to make a motion that we accept this sponsorship level information sheet as our guideline for our plans for the twenty twenty-five event.
I'll second it.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
I, I just, I'm, I'm for it, but I, I'd just like to say this needs to be getting God out, maybe put it on a website or something like that, so that the public and Mr. Blackburn's people can look at it and get, you know, an idea where they, they set in the list, and I'll say yes.
Commissioner Crimborg?
Yes.
Okay, there is one more issue that we need to discuss, and I know that people are back and forth about this, but we have to, we have to get a band now for our, for our event for summer, and I know Christie has been doing some research, and I don't know how everyone feels about this, I want you to speak up, but we had looked at the Derek Allen band, and for approximately three hours, it will be greater than four thousand or above for one band. Bands are really expensive that time of the year, but really good bands, you're going to pay for, and I know that there'll be people coming from outside the city, but there always are for every event we have, for every Christmas event, for everything, so I want to hear what the commission, how that, how you feel about that, because we're going to need to do something relatively soon.
Christie, have you checked on any other bands, or is that the going rate for this time of year?
So, for, for two hours, it was four thousand, so if we do three hours, it might be more, I'm not sure, I would have to.
And he's asking you about other bands?
I, I know, I don't want to muddy the waters and, and, you know, ask too many bands, because I'm just like needing direction from you all, I don't want to.
Well, it'd be nice to have a comparative, you know, four grand for two hours from Derek Allen, how much are we going to pay for a not as popular band? So, then I think we can choose whether we want to pay the extra for Derek Allen or John Morgan or someone like that, or if we want to go with a less known band, so I think we need a comparative.
And the other issue is that while we're doing that, I was talking to Brian, should we set up a rain out date, even for everything?
What do you mean?
I think I'll bring that up.
Well, in other words, like, we'll, we'll set them on one date, and then it's storming two or three days, we move back for a day, a, a week, or what? That's, I'm just curious, I mean.
I'll bring that up for you guys to discuss at the caucus meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I was naming Stark Trail.
So, any, any other opinions on the band thing before we get on to something else?
So, I'd like to talk about those things you're asking for at the caucus meeting, I, you know, I think when we all have some ideas, we might want to be able to share.
That's fine, I've been trying to get people to talk and not been real successful.
We have to, we have to book, I mean, because they're going to be filling up their schedules.
What we're going to have to do.
Well, how long will it take to get other bands' prices?
We, well, did you provide us the, the, do we have the Derek Allen and the other, the other band that you provided?
John Morgan.
John Morgan, and then.
We'll call tomorrow and get, get you some options.
And get some not as popular bands, both of those are very popular bands, I know we're going to pay a lot for them.
Last meeting, there was like four or five bands that had on the list.
Right, but you all kind of knocked it down and said you didn't want, you only wanted me to focus on.
I'm hoping a lot of that cost will be over by the people that are going. Yeah, and so, I mean, I, it's a little premature, I mean, I agree, just get a different variety of bands, but.
We'd rather get them booked, though, like Carolyn said.
Exactly, no, I.
Why don't we do this, why don't we get a couple others, and then the next caucus meeting, we can have a discussion, and maybe we need to call a special meeting after that to make a vote, because it needs to get done. This is one of the things that really needs to get done, because we could end up with no one.
I agree.
So, is everyone okay with that?
I'm great with it.
Christie, is that a doable? You're, you've been saddled with a lot of the.
Yes.
Stuff, is that doable to get like maybe two more bands?
Yes.
Is that okay with you, if we get two more, do you have a particular one you want her to check on? If so, please let her know now, because we don't want to come back and say, oh, you didn't get this band, so let Christie know if there's a particular band, maybe she could get two more examples, we discuss it in the next caucus meeting, and then maybe have a special meeting to vote on it, because we need to, we need to get this resolved.
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay, if everyone's okay with that, I'm okay with that.
Could you check into Lawrence Welk?
I was going to tell you, I think they're, I think they disbanded, yeah.
Lot of fall, lot of fall.
So, other new news, so, we're, we've got a caucus meeting scheduled on the day before Thanksgiving.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious if anyone is opposed to or open to moving that caucus meeting to the Monday following Thanksgiving. I don't know if all of you are cooking Thanksgiving dinner, but I am, for a large family.
Are you going to attend?
And I will not be at the caucus meeting if it's held the day before Thanksgiving, which is okay.
Will you be at the employee Thanksgiving?
Of course, because that's important, that's important to acknowledge the employees.
Yeah.
But I will not be at a, I can't give up three hours the day before Thanksgiving.
Would the Monday before that work, the twenty-third?
That will work better, or the Monday after, whichever you'd like, or whatever everyone else could make.
What can.
Or you can have it on the same day, I just won't be able to be there.
No, I think a lot of people are going to be busy that day before Thanksgiving, it's a busy day for out-of-town guests coming in and everything else, so.
I could be an idiot, idiot. I'm open that way.
Dan Murray, what about?
Monday is great, Monday is great.
The Monday after?
Whatever makes everybody happy.
Whatever everyone wants.
Okay, let's, let's do the Monday after.
The Monday after, is that December one?
December.
Yeah, December first.
I got, I got, I should have said Monday before.
I was just saying, I may not be available on December first.
So, how about?
That's okay.
Well, the tree lighting ceremony is the thirtieth, don't forget that.
So, the twenty-fourth is the last, is the, that Monday?
Monday before.
Depending on what time you have it, I have people coming to work on my house at ten o'clock in the morning on the first, so I won't be there.
Well, that's, that's, so how about the twenty-fourth, then? What do you guys think that? Caroline?
The twenty-fourth of.
November.
November. That'll work.
That's fine. Mayor, good?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, ten AM on eleven twenty-four, people. Yep.
So, I'd just like to comment, so we're in the process of doing the soliciting businesses for helping us put this on. My hope, and I think the hope of all of us here, is to have a substantial amount of money pledged to this event from the businesses, so we'll, we'll make sure as that will happen to reduce the amount of money that the city itself will have to put up. That's, all right, so department reports, city administrator.
You have my report, but the one thing that I'd like to add, and at the last caucus meeting, we talked, and you had bids from two companies to demolish the two houses, I tried to get a third, did not get a response from that one. The environmental company is coming on Friday to remove the windows, I need you guys to give me direction, do you want me to go with one of the contractors, or do you want our guys to put this on the schedule for us to do it?
I'm surprised Digger Taylor never got back with you, you know, I think Taylor Excavating would have been a good one to get a bid from, if they don't want the business, that's fine.
Yeah, and I, maybe I made a mistake by calling him directly rather than into the company, but.
So, I'm waiting towards, since the asbestos thing's been kind of put to bed, I'm kind of thinking Jerry and our crew can, can take them down.
So, once those windows come out, we need to get that taken down pretty quick, or it's going to be, you know, infested with.
Jerry, how's your schedule?
Exactly what I was thinking, how's your schedule?
It would be after, like I say, first of December sometimes, I'm going to work on blacktop and hatch them right through the holiday until Thanksgiving, they'll shut down, we don't have top plans, and just, you know, early December, we can get on, but we can just probably have some plywood around here and just use concrete screws and block things into it.
Okay.
You know, we can board up the windows, even if we make material out of house and board the windows.
Okay, any further discussion, because I'll, I'll make a motion that we allow Jerry and our crew to.
Yeah, I just don't want it to sit there for much, it'll be an ice war, so if you can get to it as soon as possible, that'd be great.
Okay, so I, I need a second, second by Commissioner Crimborg, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Crimborg?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, let's all look up, Mayor.
All right, treasurer report, Tanya?
You all have my monthly reports, the only thing I'm going to add to it is it looks like we're still on schedule to have our audit presented at our next meeting, December tenth, and then we've collected about twenty-one percent of property tax thus far.
Okay, okay.
We're still.
With a December thirty-first deadline, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
What date is this thirty-first, though?
It's a Friday, I believe.
Last day of the year.
Thank you, thank you, Mark.
I think it's a Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
Wednesday, Thursday.
It's a Wednesday.
We have to remind them coming up, it's important that five o'clock is the cutoff, anything after five is penalty.
Okay, all right.
Can we put a message on the website?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, now we come to our engineering report, this is always the fun part of the meeting for us, Sean?
Yeah, so just two quick updates, we talked a little bit about Vincent Drive project this morning, so ninety percent plans were delivered to SD one on October sixteenth, we followed up on the twenty-ninth with our easement exhibit, so there should be in the process of starting to hire some, some of the new facilities, I don't remember the exact number, but somewhere around seven properties that we need to easement from to accommodate various, or, or. We sent out utility letters on November fifth, basically to, to get their final blessing and confirm that there's no, no conflict with their facilities, so we're, we're in final stages now, plans are done, pretty much done, we're just waiting on confirmation of easements, so we're, we're on track to, you know, if all goes well with the easements, go to bid sometime in January or February, and that, that was originally what we planned anyway, and honestly, that's typically the construction bids that we like to cover here in the city itself. Fingers crossed that there's no, no surprises with the easements. The other project I have an update on is the twenty twenty-five street program, so Rigler went out and did some of the curb work and storm work on, on Mason Drive and all that, that is done. They were supposed to come out this week, but we got that road, the snowstorm, hopefully road, it's no storm, so it'll probably be next week, but we did, I know just this afternoon, coordinate with some, about some, some changes in the plans, not, not, maybe not change, but adjustments to the plans and some areas, so they're, they're looking to get started, looking to get done this year before the plants close. I don't have the exact date yet, but I imagine that's, that's real ahead.
They will give the neighborhoods a couple day, signs up or something, one is going to do it?
Yeah, they, they're supposed to provide a forty-eight hour notice.
Forty-eight hour, good.
So, Mike, with that said, it'll be next week, unless they happen to work a week, I'm not expecting that.
All right, because they were working on sixteen all the way out to one side.
Yeah.
And they, I was wondering when they're going to come in the other side.
Yeah.
Because one of the worst parts of that road is on the side they haven't done yet, they'll take your wheel off if you're not careful.
Yeah, and they, they got quite a few crews, and I've seen them all around the county, Campbell County, they, they're, they're busy, just like all of them, just trying to get paid against the weather, and that's all.
Okay, so, moving along now to fire department.
Let's see, fire department, for October, they had a total of ninety-two calls for service. Mutray given, we gave one to Fort Wright and four to Lyman, mutray received, three from Covington, two from Fort Wright, let's see, ALS service calls were twenty-four, four, BLS service calls were seventeen, total hospital transports were forty-one, car prevention inspections, twelve, re-inspections, one, agency training hours, a hundred and fifty-six, EMT, EMS training hours, a hundred and twenty-four, current projects, host, 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 testing, medical, medic refresher, and public events, fall press, Halloween candy, and, I've given a department activity hours, a hundred and sixty-two. Anything you missed, chief?
No, sir, that seems about everything.
Right, that's it.
Okay, all right, legal counsel, anything, Jack?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, parks and recreation.
Well, first I want to say Christie has worked extremely hard in putting together our Christmas event, which is one of the more beloved events for children in the city of Taylor Mill, and her listing of things that will be happening on November thirtieth, from three to five, photo opportunities with Santa, we're going to have our trackless train back, the kids love that, and they really enjoyed that, I think, I remember being involved with that that year, bouncy houses games, Santa's riding station, and your usual hot cocoa and cookies, looks like a, looks like a great event. Christie, I'm going to let you speak more about that and the other things that you have going, but she's done a great job with this.
So, the tree lighting event, it is on November thirtieth from three to five, I backed it up, made it a little earlier, because the moment that sun goes down, it's freezing, and so, nobody seems to enjoy being out there when it's like freezing cold, so I have, little by little, we're now at three o'clock, so we'll see how this goes. It should be something different for the kids this year, just with the bouncy houses and different photo ops, we have the inflatable Santa sleigh that the whole family can climb on and get a picture, as well as Santa Claus will, will be there. The Santa's neighborhood visit starts at nine AM, we don't track it, you know, we, we don't do all of the GPS and all of that kind of fun stuff, but everybody's pretty good about getting on Facebook saying, hey, they're coming down the street, so I would just encourage the residents just to continue to do that, just to give everybody notice of they may see Santa and Mrs. Claus out there. And then the last day to recycle the Christmas trees, live Christmas trees, at the park is on January the ninth, so we'll have signs posted, probably like in the back gravel lot, I'll work with Jerry, and of course, remove all of your ornaments and all of that kind of fun stuff, but we'll get into those details in December, that's all I have.
Jerry, will they have a bonfire up there for the Christmas tree lighting, and in the past years they've had?
They have in the past, but that's kind of, the fire party is very small.
Okay, Chief Lynch. Okay, Chief Lynch. We got this out, we can build them. That's the wrong thought.
Y'all walked out.
I, I guess we can discuss that, I don't have a problem with it, but it depends on whether, you know, somebody's basically got to stand there, like they have in the past, and watch it.
It is.
Keep kids out of it and off of it.
That sounds like a police issue. Well, why don't you and the chief, if you should put in fires out, talk about lighting one.
I can show you that light. I got these.
All right. Moving along. Police. Mark?
Thank you. I don't really have anything. We welcome Jeff to the force. He'll do, I think he'll be a great addition, so I'll turn it over to Chief Mills.
You have my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but the only other thing I want to bring up is that we, this year alone, have received between like $18,000 and $20,000 worth of equipment on grants from the Attorney General's Office, all bulletproof vests, ballistic shield, and helmets for all of our officers. So we only got one shield. Those shields are about $10,000 apiece, so we've got one shield right now from the AG's office, but we've purchased five vests this year on that grant, and every officer has been issued a ballistic helmet. So that, that body armor grant program through the AG's office is, is a big help.
Can we also acknowledge Moose Log? The Moose, how many AEDs they have bought for the police department?
They have donated three AEDs this year to us. Moose is a great partner for us, and they've graciously done things over there to be able to provide us with three additional AEDs.
And we want to definitely show appreciation to them. That's huge, three AEDs. And I believe that they're constantly asking, what can we do for you? That's a nice organization to have in this city.
It is. When, when, unfortunately, when the airplane crashed in Louisville, the pilot lived in Independence, and I saw today that Lindeman Funeral Home has that funeral, and they're asking for donations in Louisville, flowers to go to either St. Cecilia's Church, Holy Cross High School, or St. Vincent de Paul, so I thought that was good. Keep it local.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, Public Works, so Rosie?
Like Jerry said, they've been patching before those plans close, which we appreciate. We see it all over. I also want to say I really appreciate all the concrete work you did on Lakewood. Our Public Works really does a professional job. I mean, you couldn't have brought in a crew or a company to do as good a job as Jerry and his crew did on Lakewood, and I just want to know, the city, we appreciate it. And then I'll let Jerry tell you the rest.
Pretty much everything's on my report. We're just cleaning up the blacktop and the rampets and patching it. Small holes that we just left out, we're waiting to fall, to knock them all out. We have projects going on, and all summer long, so dragging off of them every day, we could get on the projects. Still got stuff going on. Fast talk boards still waiting for the fence to go up and the bolts to go up, but the poles are up. We're working on it, we'll do it all up. That's all I have.
On the white garage down there, what kind of stuff was in there? Just, you said you cleaned the white garage up?
After, yeah, the Fire Department, everybody, they got all their stuff and supplies out. There was like old fountains with broken doors. We took that to the scrapyard, you know, and just the garbage and stuff that was in there that was, you know, a lot of it was just around, but for the most part, we took out the garbage and trash that wasn't, that wasn't, you know.
Okay. Just kidding.
Is that it? Rosie? All right. So having concluded that, the only thing I will add is, is the events that are coming up has already been discussed. The other thing is about, about our streets, I'm very proud of the major repairs we've made. We got, Mason Road is gonna be a stickler for us. Got the GeoTech report, which was alarming, because it was so expensive, but we're working on a couple things, maybe, maybe, big baby, that we can get some assistance from somebody state or the county, so we're doing, we're doing that. So having said that, a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Crimbor, and second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor? Voice call vote, aye, close. The ayes have it. Please adjourn.